Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of August, Tuesday, August 11th. The meeting is now called to order at 7:00 o'clock. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording? Okay. Please join me in my salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Through the chair, just for the folks here today. Items on the agenda that have been continued to the next meeting are Gibson Road, continued to the next meeting on August 25th, and 783 Southridge Street has been continued to the next meeting. Is anyone here for that item? Okay. That has been continued to the next meeting as well. Thank you.
So the first item is ANR, 282 Southridge Street, SDC Realty LLC. Anyone here? Please come up to the table and introduce yourself.
David Papas from SDC LLC.
Welcome. If you had an opportunity to go to the ANR.
Through the chair, we have received this ANR for 282 Southridge in the past for carving out a separate section of the property at that time. This is to carve out another section of that property, conforms with all the zoning requirements of the lot, and meets the minimum square foot requirement as well. I didn't have any issues with the proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else? Paul?
No.
Jim?
That's a lot right next to Gregory. Correct. All right, how do you promote that?
It'd be nice to go through that whole section.
Someday, hopefully.
Yeah.
The rest of the site appears getting really well thought up and developed, so we'll open. Only matter of time. We had a big improvement when they put the power line in, picked it up a lot less than it did before.
Make a motion to accept the approval of Quarrin.
Good motion and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Signee.
Ah, it's kind of slow. Gonna get the water up there on a couple of trees. They don't know what time, summertime goes the pine, pine ham is out, and those will take the sun and the pine right now, so. They might find anything hard to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, it's kind of slow. Gonna get the water up there on a couple of trees. They don't know what time, summertime goes the pine, pine ham is out, and those will take the sun and the pine right now, so. They might find anything hard to.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
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 Thank you, everybody.
Put the day on every side of you.
I can do that.
I'm missing on that one.
There's four copies of that paper. I'll put the date on.
Thank you.
Chris Stachowski, 121 Southridge Street, requests to amend conditions of the special permit application for motor vehicle repair use.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Well, the reason I wanted to come here, first I didn't make it to the last meeting, I was away, and the amendment says that Bill, Mr. Coyle had to look at pavement. And I brought pictures of the pavement, I filled in some of the holes in the parking lot with some grindings that I was able to access free, so I took advantage of it. But by doing that, I kind of covered over the existing pavement, and it looks like it's all grindings and it's not. So I brought pictures, if I could hand them out, show what the existing pavement was before I put any grindings down. Two, no, this is.
Oh, no. Different ones?
Yeah, different, just a few different pictures too. Over 50% of the lot is paved.
Where'd you put the grinding stuff in?
Well, the grindings now, they're pretty much, I put some grindings in, if you look at this picture here, see how there was some holes in the pavement? I filled it in, but when you put the grindings down with the machine, there's no way to get them exactly in that hole, so they're kind of spread all over the pavement. So now when Mr. Coyle went down to look at it, he thinks, which you might be right by thinking that, that there's grindings throughout the whole parking lot, when there's a lot of pre-existing pavement.
Do you have pictures of what it looks like now?
I do not.
So this is what it looked like when you purchased it?
No, no, this was, when I purchased it, it was all trees, so it was all trees, all grown in, so once I took the trees down, I was able to scrape the, there's a little bit of dirt on top of this pavement. If you looked at it when I purchased it, you would have thought there was no pavement there at all. But I lucked out, finding all this pavement underneath, and I, you know, I just kind of, trying to avoid the substantial cost of paving the whole lot when I already have the pavement existing.
But I think our comment on that part in particular was relative to the fact we were so close to a detention basin and the river that's across the street, wanted to make sure that if you're going to be doing vehicle repair on the site, and also with all the commercial vehicles coming in and out, that any leaking fluid or anything like that from other vehicles wouldn't drip through the concrete. I think my thought would be, I'm going to follow Bill Coyle's lead as far as recommendation on it. His thought was that in order to protect the environment and the town and all those things, that you needed to be repaved, I wouldn't be in a position to vote against that, so I think my suggestion would be.
Although, I would say to that, as most of the repair work that's going to be coming in is appointment work only, this lot will never be full with vehicles, and all the work will be done inside, so there's ample parking for, I would say, at least 20 vehicles, which would never even get to that point, on top of pavement now. So if anything did leak, it would be on the pavement, it wouldn't be on the, you know, it wouldn't be on the.
For this user in particular, but I think the approval is a little more broad than that, is not right. So my thought, Bill's a very reasonable guy, and if you were to talk with him, he would likely come up with a reasonable solution, which the board, at least I, I would vote to endorse.
Well, Matt, what did, you said you had a conversation?
I did, thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Coyle and I spoke this afternoon. Bill would be receptive to the voice decision. His recommendation stands for the pavement, but at first he wanted it to come farther past the building. He wouldn't be opposed to the idea of it at least coming to the garage door, and by the looks of this photo, and it's my first time seeing it, and I don't want to continue with posing, Chris, does this extend it all to the property line from here?
Yes.
Does? Because this looks like that, at least that blacktop goes past the garage door. Just my two cents on it anyways. And if the repair vehicles are coming in through the site off the street, they would make it straight to the garage door with what looks like more formidable components of the asphalt. The rest of the back lot of the site doesn't seem to have that.
And so on the, where we can't see here, that's where a lot, I noticed where a lot of the grindings were.
Just simply, simply because when the person that dumped it didn't dump it where I wanted him to dump it, so once you dump it in a spot and then drive over it a few times, it's just, it's there. But there is asphalt underneath, and a lot of it, not a lot of it, some of it was broken up, and, you know, the winter, in the spring when everything thawed out, there was some holes and things, so I just wanted to fill it in, and so it didn't have mud, that was my main concern, was keeping the mud down, keeping the vehicles digging up.
My suggestion to you is to go back to Mr. Coyle, have him go in down there and look at the property again, and have him give us a second view on the thing. For us to go against the town engineer and his recommendations, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Well, I respect that, the only, he's never seen these pictures, that's why, and these were, these is pre-existing asphalt that was there on the property, so, you know, I would have a feeling that if he saw these pictures, he might change his mind because there is pavement there. I'm not, I'm not, so far, I've tried to do everything that the town has asked me to do, and I just, you know, I'm trying to avoid, it could be potentially $25,000, $30,000 to have this paved. And that's just, for existing pavement that's there, it's more than enough room to park whatever vehicles that they could potentially be working on, and most of it's appointment work.
Well, Mr. Coyle is only a mile and a half from you with that.
Right.
Through the chair?
Yes.
From the date of the close of the hearing, the planning board has a 90-day window to render the decision. If the board so desired to get a second review from Mr. Coyle, the window is available.
That's what I, you?
I think it would be a good idea to do that.
Okay.
If we're, if I was able to make some talking to him, maybe repair any pavement that's broken apart, leave the existing pavement, which is the majority of it, leave it alone and just have it repaired where there might be holes and.
Repaired and sealed, or?
Exactly. See, I'm just trying to avoid the, I'm willing to compromise.
I'll bet they would seal an area like that completely, okay, for probably in the vicinity of $2,500 bucks or less.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I think, I think it sounds to me like the board's willing to be flexible and work with you and compromise as well, as long as we have some endorsement from the town engineer who would agree with that, so. And Bill's a very reasonable guy, so.
And I think these photographs are compelling, you know, but there may be some additional work, and maybe able to avoid having to have the whole thing paved, but there may be some additional repairs that need to be done.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So we'll, through the chair, speak to Mr. Coyle, present these pictures to him, and we'll schedule a visit collectively, between you, him, and I, and we'll go take another look at it, given this information.
What do you want to add?
You want to add?
I'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, next meeting.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the pictures, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah. Good that he wrote those.
Yeah. Never guessed.
Okay, CFI and Shamrock LLC requesting a site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for gymnasium on property located in the GI zoning district, 2-4 Elm Street, Auburn, assesses map 57, Lot 14. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, Attorney Todd Broder here from Fletcher Tilton here representing the applicants, excuse me, Brian and Laura O'Neill. I'll give you a little bit of background.
Can I stop you there one moment?
Make that public, Jim, so they know.
I did. I have to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And also, I need a motion to open the hearing, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Okay. Let's continue. I was going to offer you a little bit of history, which I think is relevant, and you'll understand why we're here. Back in 2001, the site received site plan approval for a 5,000 square foot addition. This is Bob Murray's property at the corner of Elm and Route 20. Expanded at that time, it's had a number of different uses in this space. My clients came along somewhere in the summer of 2014, saw the space, liked it, thought it fit well with what they had planned, which was a CrossFit gym use. They looked around, talked with some of the folks in Town Hall, but didn't realize that they needed any kind of zoning relief. So they signed a lease in late 14, 2014, put some money into improving the property, and have been opening, have opened the business and have been operating for nearly a year now. Then they got informed that they needed to come through this process. We've gone to the zoning board of appeals, but you were our, you were our last stop. So they applied, we went to the zoning board of appeals in early spring, got their decision, waited for the appeal period, and filed for this application. It's a 3,600 square foot space, which they use as a CrossFit gym. They host small classes, typically 10 students per class max. I was just getting some updated information, they said they're really about six, six participants per class. So it's not a heavy use, but it is not a use that's allowed under zoning, so we did go to the zoning board of appeals for a use variance, and did receive that use variance back in the spring. There's ample onsite parking, there's no proposed changes to the site, it's an existing site, existing building, existing parking, so this is really, in essence, kind of a cleanup permit that we're looking for. I think, you know, our clients did some due diligence with the town, but not knowing the zoning process, just didn't understand that a use variance was necessary, and so they've been operating in such, for about a year with no issues at the site. You'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
And you got a variance for business use in an industrial zone, is that correct?
Sounds right, I can go back and check. I included a copy of it with the application materials. It's in a general industrial zone.
Okay. And right now, you have six per class, and the maximum would be 10 students per class?
That's what they're averaging, somewhere around six. You know, 10, 10 or 11 seems to be kind of what they get for a maximum. The space is large enough to hold, you know, to host more, it's just.
Are you anticipating growth? You're hoping for it?
Fantastic, yeah. We would cap classes, though, we, you know, for safety reasons within the actual class atmosphere, we would probably cap classes around 15 people, you know, without some sort of change to our format of, you know, we'd have to have multiple coaches and something like that if we were going to go above 15 people, so we can cap the classes at 15.
Right, so 15 people, and how many employees?
You're looking at us.
And if it did, you said if it went to 15 people or more, then you would need to add additional?
We would probably add class times.
Class times?
Yeah.
And also instructors, or just the two of you, the two of us?
The two of us, just.
Right now, they seem to be busiest at the pre-business and post-business hours, the 5, 6 a.m., and then the 6 p.m., you know, type of classes seem to be most popular, obviously, for working people that have the nine-to-five type of schedule, you know, class in the middle of the day doesn't work, so they see the before, before business and after business.
So typically, most of your classes are happening before the other businesses are open in the building, and then after they've closed in the evening?
Correct. We have one class that operates right up until 10 a.m., which is when the building that we are sharing with another business, they open at 10 a.m. And then we have a class that starts at 4:30 p.m. that ends at 5:30, they close their business at 5:00 p.m. So there's really a half an hour throughout the course of the whole day that's overlapped.
Okay. Did you have anything?
No, I don't have any.
Jonathan?
Actually, I have a number of parking spaces down in back of the building that Mr. Murray put in for your use, aside the ones that are in front of the building.
How many total?
Oh, how many did he put in the back? Seven. Seven?
Seven in the back, yeah.
Seven in the back, how many on the side?
Nine. Nine.
And then we have three on Elm Street side as well, we have a total of 19 spots.
Through the chair, I'm not failing to see the 19 spaces on the plan, but I understand it's an older plan, and it's a pre-existing use with a, with a pre-existing, impervious surface, it's just preparing for the meeting today, we're trying to find where the parking spaces were.
I think what they, I think what they showed you on there was what was added at the time, and probably not what was already pre-existing, but.
It's still connected.
Because if you look at the plan that's in front of you, and granted, it's, you know, mimeographed several times, is that still a word we use, mimeograph? From 2001, and, but if you look to the left of the building, that's, there's a large portion of parking area on this side of the building, if I'm not mistaken. Route 20 up here, Elm Street there.
Yes, that's the part that was added for specifically for us.
Right.
Yep.
That was what we added last year. Yeah.
We're going to take a look at it.
No, I think you're already operating there, seems to be successful, off-hours of the other business, doesn't sound as if the town's received a plethora of complaints, so, I think it's great. There it is.
It was never any discussion with the owner of the building that there was any kind of zoning or anything that needed to happen before you moved in and used that space?
No, well, with the realtor, then we had a realtor who shared most of the space as well, so, that was.
But they didn't have an attorney.
They do now, though. This is what it looks like now.
So you have the three spots, if you're looking, you can see the seven line spots to the left of the building, then you can see the nine right there where your mouse is, and then if you go to the right side of the building, where you can.
On Elm Street?
On Elm Streets, on the Elm Street. We have three designated spots for us right there as well, so that's where the 19 spots are.
And all, you can kind of see where that circle is, that with, it's a big wide open space with those seven spots, that's all wide open and it's gravelled, so, I mean. It's on a separate parcel of land, is it the same ownership, or?
Same ownership.
Yeah. He's told us that we're welcome to use that, we have had spillover and stuff like that, so.
The only problem with the ones in the back is it's gated.
Right, which we have a key.
We have access to that.
We unlock it and lock it at the end of the night.
Scoring weekend. I do have one question on the statement of facts, that Attorney Broder, you said that the business has been in car location for several months, having permits granted by the town, to what were you referring when you made that statement?
I'm not sure that I did, I know it's in the decision, but. Be reading from the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, the statement of facts, it says Attorney Broder began his presentation. Having permits granted by the town, I'm just curious what you meant by that statement.
I see that it's in there, you know, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure exactly what the reference is. The clients did go to the town, they filed a DBA certificate at that time. Do you have any building permits, or plumbing permit, or anything like that?
Occupancy permit.
No, there was no occupancy permit, I don't believe, I mean, I think that's, that's really.
It was the DBA and then the LLC, where what we, through the state, where what we had.
There is. And I, I can't speak to it, it was, it was a bit ago, and I don't recall exactly what I, what I said, but as I, as I think I start off here, you know, they did go and see, they kind of made the rounds around Town Hall, okay, you know, from you, do I, do I need anything? Do I need anything?
And that's what we're trying to determine, is where is the disconnect? And that's why when I saw that there were permits, well, what permits? We didn't know about them, and they needed a zoning variance in order to be operational in that building.
Well, there wasn't, I don't think there was any work which would have triggered, you know, a plumbing permit or anything like that, I mean, there was a bathroom in there, right? And it's just a big, you know, it's a, you know, it's a big open space, so it's not as if there was anything done to, you know, walls, or, you know, additions of rooms, or anything of that nature, that would have really triggered more scrutiny from somebody within, within town. And, you know, if you look at it from, you know, you folks all understand zoning, but from, from, you know, a layperson's perspective, they go and they see this, this building, you know, on Route 20, next to a gym, next to, you know, all these various facilities that look, this looks like it fits, and so you see the space and it works, and next to it's a gun shop, you've got a tile shop, and whatever else close by, you've got the gym across the street, and you, it just didn't, for them, it didn't trigger any, any need to go any further than let's sign a lease and get going.
So, and I guess that's where my comments, I look at this as a, this is a teachable moment for other people that are looking at properties, to come up to Town Hall and talk with someone, and find out what's necessary before they're renting a space. So, other than that, Paul, did you have any further comments?
That whole stretch away into this industrial, all the way from there, all the way down to Mass Pike where it crosses over, and most of those businesses have had to have special permits. And the reason for it is that it's not an industrial use, they have to have a special permit, and they have to show that there is, you know, adverse conditions that affect the property, or there's water around, or it's in an aquifer, or something like that. But I know that those other businesses in that building have that, but they all had to get a special permit.
Hey, so it's, you know, it's inherent upon someone who is looking at that, as I said, this is a teachable moment.
I've had two other businesses that have permitted in that stretch, and it's been a surprise to them both when they came to me that they needed that type of relief.
Assuming the folks from JW Land Development are, don't have any, you know, CrossFit classes and no public comment, make a motion to close the hearing, unless you want to open it up for that first.
Also?
I have some questions for the afternoon.
Sure.
Thank you.
Attorney Broder, this site plan, is the text on that left-hand side, the parking requirements, was that there, or was this typed in from this year? It's the minimum parking requirements based on the square footage of the building.
We didn't touch this site plan. This is the site plan that was submitted in 2001.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else made additions to it.
Okay. I was just curious, because the references, the use as industrial use for its minimum parking requirements.
Right.
Given this was a variance granted in an industrial zone, it's now obviously a business use, and a business use for minimum parking requirement is 200, it's more parking spaces.
And they've got one more in.
How much space are you taking up? Are you, is it 3,600 square feet?
Right.
Require 18 spaces, I guess you're showing 19 on the site.
And that.
And there's one other business, two other businesses there.
Yeah.
Correct.
This is the one that.
Yes, Archery and Arms.
Right.
And they are required to meet their minimum requirements as well. Aside from, in the past, I've seen parking agreements with other tenants or other neighbors to make that accommodate, but the site itself, in my opinion, doesn't meet the minimum parking requirement for the use. Something the board, I believe, should consider, you know, allow the applicants to respond if there's something I'm missing.
Did you say does not?
Yeah, if you're required to have the 18 spaces minimum requirement for the business use in this, for this 3,600 square foot building, the space, the site overall only has 19 spaces. So, we all.
requirements, was that there or was this typed in for this use? It's a, the minimum parking requirements based on the square footage of the building.
Uh, we didn't touch this site plan, uh, this is the site plan that was submitted in 2001.
Okay, let's just...
I don't know if anybody else made additions to it.
Okay, I was just, just curious because the references, the use is industrial use for its minimum parking requirements.
Right.
Given this was a variance granted in an industrial zone, it's now obviously a business use, and the business use for minimum parking requirement is two hundred, it's more parking spaces.
And they've got one more in it.
How much space are you taking up, are you, is it thirty-six hundred square feet?
Right.
Require eighteen spaces, it's showing nineteen on the site.
And that...
And there's one other business, two other businesses there.
Yeah.
Correct.
This is the one that...
Yes, Archery and Arms.
Right.
And they are required to meet their minimum requirements as well. Aside from, uh, in the past, I've seen parking agreements with other tenants or other neighbors to, to, to make that accommodate, but the site itself, in my opinion, doesn't meet the minimum parking requirement for the use. Something the board, I believe, should consider. You know, allow the applicants to respond if there's something I'm missing.
Did you say does not?
Yeah, if, if you're required to have the eighteen spaces minimum requirement for the business use in this, for this thirty-six hundred square foot building, the space, the site overall only has nineteen spaces.
So, we'll... Seven on the side and then three on Elm Street side.
During here, the building is still going all the way across.
And then that wide area, they have two lots that you could, right, put heat out of it too.
I guess, if we make reference to the, to the map up there, the spaces to the left of the building... These spaces, whose are they?
Those are ours.
Those are yours?
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces in there? Whose spaces are these?
Those are, someone's...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine I think there?
Yep.
And then, another three there, whose spaces are these?
Those go to those, the shops that are there.
Whose spaces are these?
Those are the auto parts, these over here, this whole area is all for us. It's just that there's no lines.
You could get a parking plan.
It would take a...
It's a little bit required for them.
It's just, but we're talking about thirty minutes of share, it's time to have a gun shop.
So I, I don't know how many spaces the gun shop requires, 'cause I don't know how much space they operate in, but, you know, we, we do have the ability to park in the rear area, it's not striped currently, I think that's probably an accurate depiction of what it looks like, you know, and that's where we would suggest any overflow parking would be, it hasn't been required as of, as of right now.
All right, so, we're, again, this is just my opinion, and I apologize, I'm not trying to sway the board on one way or the other, but, we're, we're acting on a site plan from 2001 for an industrial use, that was approved for an industrial use, we're looking at a business use today, it has a larger volume for minimum parking requirement. If we are to act on this application in front of us, we would be accepting the site plan in front of us, which doesn't even show nineteen parking spaces. Personally, I would be more comfortable seeing a plan that shows the parking for not only this tenant, but the other two tenants, to show that the site meets the minimum requirement now that there's a variance for the business use. That's just me.
Could we request as a condition, submission of a conforming parking plan for the building?
Of course, assuming that the site can conform to the amount of parking before it feel comfortable that it could and be striped or whatnot, to show the amount of spaces for all three tenants.
Could the, could the approval also be conditioned that it's just for the senior and not for, I mean, your concern is more relating to if it was to change into another type of retail or other business use.
Does the site plan go with the plan? More for the use.
Paul, any additional comments?
Well, as I say, there's, there's plenty of room for more parking, but it's not striped and it's not paved.
Does the applicant, you guys want to respond to that? Would you be able to provide a...
If you'll give me one second, I might have, I might be able to help the conversation as far as what, what the gun shop requires and what's, and what's there. They came before the, the planning board in...
Just a couple of years ago.
Two fourteen, I think, maybe, maybe two thirteen for, you know, we didn't, I didn't know this until we started digging a little bit, but they, they filed with the zoning board of appeals in two thirteen for a use variance similarly, and then, I believe I saw they came before the planning board, which would make sense at that time for, for a site plan approval. Just kinda wondering, what, what happened with that decision, I don't seem to have it in front of me. You know, I sup, I suppose we could, we could supply a plan, I believe that area in the back where, where striping could be shown, is probably, you know, I don't, I don't know what your standard is for parking, whether you can just stripe an area like that that's not finished paved, I don't know, I don't know what the great, what the top of, you know, what the condition is of the, of the dirt back, it's gravelled. We could show that and then submit to you a revised site plan, which shows the technically compliant spaces. You know, and it's really, we'd have to ask Mr. Murray for permission to, really to get him to strike those spaces for us.
I mean, that's just my opinion and I, and I apologize, I mean, it's just, the use has changed, the original site plan for, for the industrial use, for that amount of parking, and we're looking at a business use, it's changed the parking requirement entirely. So I've seen that on a, on a revised plan, kinda makes our file complete, not only for the current applicant, but for any future tenants of the building for the simple use. It also provides that accommodation as well.
I guess, my thought is, the sites are functioning, I think we've made similar, we've made similar approvals in the past. I don't have a problem making, issuing a, or making a motion to approve, but I think it's reasonable to then ask for, you know, a submitted plan to have, you know, something in the future, should a use change, or should you get to the point where you're successful enough to have them classified as well, if there's something on front of us. Is that...
Well, the point is, yes, so to provide the information for you.
So, we could do it with a condition, conforming parking plan.
Okay, so you need a motion to close the hearing? To make a motion to close the hearing?
Any further discussion? Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the site plan with, I guess, standard conditions of the most that may not apply, as well as a condition that the applicant provide a conforming parking plan to the, or...
To letting?
To the planning office.
Correct.
Timeline?
Before the appeal period lasts.
Yeah, maybe that's reasonable. So what's the appeal period?
Uh, it's twenty-one days after the decision's filed at Town Hall.
It's just a site plan, it's not an appeal period on a site plan.
Good point, so the decision would be run by the next meeting, on the stamp in the following day, so...
I would, I would submit to you that I don't know how long it will take to get a plan done, and the reason I say that is, to be honest, I'm not even sure who did this 2001 plan, so we'd probably have to have somebody go out there, survey.
I could, uh, through the chair, I could also request waivers for professional engineering, site lighting, landscaping and all that, and it could be a, a plan acceptable to the board.
Through the chair, they could waive, request a waiver from the requirements site plan.
Right, for the engineered design plan, it doesn't have to be...
Okay.
So long as it shows the parking, we're set.
We can get to a plan that shows parking.
Correct.
I could do it right now.
Getting mixed messages here. So what's, what, is there a amendment that you're recommending that we make to that? Or is the way it's worded acceptable?
Well, it's a submission of conforming parking.
Okay, and we don't need to approve any waivers or anything like that in addition?
Okay.
In that case...
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Bring, bring the motion.
Oh, uh, so it's a motion to approve the site plan with standard conditions, and an additional condition that a, the applicant submit a conforming parking plan to the planning office within twenty-one days.
Oh, yeah, okay, you have that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Right, second.
Any further discussion? Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. We should have the decision drafted and they'll be signing it by the next meeting.
Okay.
Twenty-five.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
JW Land Development LLC for definitive subdivision plan known as Windmill Estates for twelve lot subdivision on fifty-nine-five Prospect Street on Mass, map sixty-seven dash twenty.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to entertain a motion to reopen the hearing, please.
A motion to reopen the hearing, yeah, I'm on it.
Is there a second?
Aye.
I think I'll just turn it right over to Ken, pretty much, we're in the final phases,
I believe everything has been taken care of, but, prefer to have Ken take care of that portion of it with a discussion with Bill and Joanna.
Thought you were gonna give me more time, Joe.
Sorry, Ken, I would've helped you.
Okay, 'cause...
I could provide that a little, Adam Chair, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
To the chair, I spoke with the town engineer today, just a little wrap-up of how we got to the revised plans that we're receiving today, as opposed to, they include some minor, and I mean minor revisions to the plans we received in our packets. After the Wednesday meeting, the applicant came through the town engineer's office, more specifically Ms. Pigman, and she had three, maybe four, minor revisions to add to the, to the plan, so, the applicant provided updated plans this morning, and Joanna provided a letter of endorsement to the board today, which is also handed out, so the town engineer's office is satisfied with the latest rendition of the plan. And some of those changes, I believe Ken would be able to show.
That's pretty much, not shall there be, I could back up just a little bit and say, since the last meeting, we did go through some engineering comments that you, also, you had in your package, wasn't a revision today, but, it was a revision since the last meeting, so, and essentially those were, the engineering requested we increase the size of the culverts under the road, they were fifteen inch, two fifteen inch pipes, they asked for two eighteen inch pipes, they asked us to revise the drainage calculations to include the, the effects of A and Rs, the two A and Rs that were proved separately, so we, we had to bring them into the drainage calculations and, so in essence, assume that they weren't developed in a precondition, and then include them as developed in a postcondition, even though they don't really come into this approval, but they wanted to take that development into account. So that, that resulted in us changing, making some minor changes to the stormwater detention basin over here, it really makes very little difference, and then, and these were approved already previously anyway, so they don't really come into play. So those changes were made, and then in the course of revising the plans, there were a couple of other things that they saw, they just asked us to change the direction of an outlet pipe over here, some notation things that they wanted to get caught up on, so very, very minor. We've previously addressed all the comments from peer review and the town engineer comments, so, in essence, we, we think we've met everybody's conditions and we're, we're pretty well set.
Okay, did you wanna read that letter from the construction services into the record?
Sure. Board of Health provided us with a letter today, actually, so I provided that to the applicant. Board of Health's provided a comment for the subdivision to inform that the proposed dwellings be served by public water, public sewer utilities, no further requirements from the Board of Health at this time for this proposed development. The standard the Board of Health has to make their review is part of the subdivision process, and this is the letter they provided.
Paul, do you have any questions or comments?
There was no changes to the physical size of the lots or the furnages on the lots?
No, there was nothing, the only, the only change to any lots is we quickly added one, one additional drainage easement, but the, the lotting, the sizes, the number, dimensions, all the same. The only, the only actual change is, we, we submitted a whole new set of drawings, but the only changes were on sheet three and six, which just related to this stormwater.
I don't have any projections.
John?
Um, no.
Is there any further comment?
Is that one question? Conservation Commission, they're meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I believe, they had a previously already closed their hearing and are, have been waiting the results of the board today before they render their decision, and these updated plans have been provided to the commission as well.
We're waiting to see if we approved it with the new layout?
Yeah, they just wanted to ensure that they got the most recent plans.
Yeah, we didn't really wanna have them render the decision until the planning board was satisfied, because we didn't wanna have to go back and start over with them.
Sure.
Because the planning board wanted to, you know, move something somewhere.
So, process-wise, close the hearing? Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second?
Aye. Motion to accept waivers?
Yes, and the waivers are on the front page of the plan. Correct, these have already been discussed, this, through the chair, was the requirement to locate all trees over twelve inches, the length of the road of eight hundred feet, I believe it's just under nine?
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty, thank you. And to waive sidewalks on both sides, it'll be sidewalks on one side, and a crossway for the flood fencing on detention basin one.
Yeah, which, who have said before, you, may not be implied.
Right.
The grant, which would be mine, requesting, but, we're showing the fence.
Make a motion to waive, waive the waivers?
So include the fence?
Fence on the detention boundary.
How deep is the...
About two feet.
Is it, is it gonna be filled with water?
Mostly, the hundred-year storm has about two feet of water in it maybe, but most of the storms are less than a foot, that's for this, this basin right here.
And it is standard condition with no, when you're not in a storm event, is it?
In, in a normal condition, it, it might have four inches of water in it for a day after a big storm, 'cause I did allow a little bit of opportunity for recharge, but generally speaking, I would expect almost no water there.
I believe, through the chair, the reason for the fence, was it, was something you raised previously?
Safety.
Right. Public safety. Part of the reason the fence is for detention bases there in the first place?
Yeah. So, Jim, you were in the middle of making your motion, did you want to require the fence around the detention basis?
You know something, if it, if it was a... If anything ever happened, okay, I wouldn't wanna say that I, I'm the one that's suggestion, suggested that you need a fence. I, I think there should be some kind of a barrier around it, and if there's any look problems, maybe you could just put some ababaidies around in front of it to, to enhance the, the look of it, I mean, you can use a, what's the normal height of a fence like that, four feet?
It's four feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a big fence, it's just, it would look better without one, but...
I agree with you, but you know something, you can cover it with foliage and, you know, you can put something in front of it to, better safe, better safe than sorry, and you're to that point now where this little, this little thing isn't gonna hurt anybody, it might save you a lot of embarrassment later.
Through the chair, it is on the plan already, so don't have to see another opinion.
Okay, so...
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of July 28.
Second. There are a couple of corrections. I marked it up a little bit, too. I did minutes for 15 years at CMOPC, so I'll just provide the corrections to Eric. Motion and second?
Prove with side with corrections.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Mass DOT toll booth project notification letter.
Sure, so, thank you. Through the chair, this is a letter sent to both Julie and I, requesting our feedback for their project to eliminate the toll booths at the Mass Pike on-ramp in our town. This would be the best, if they're eliminating them altogether, or this is the really fast one, like they have in Florida. I might have missed that.
Demolition, remove the toll plaza structures, and reconfiguration of respective lanes and connecting ramps.
I think on that, what we should do is get some more feedback from how the town officials feel about that, or the town meeting members feel about that...
Agreed.
Before we even discuss it, okay? I don't even want to get into the discussion on that.
Okay, I brought it here because I was curious, just having received the letter, but my main concern is the bottleneck that happens off, getting off, trying to get onto 290 from the Mass Pike. That's about seven lanes reduced to one in a very short period, reducing the toll, and that's just going to get worse. I'd like to see more details on that, if there's widening or lane changes or whatnot. In addition to that, in my conversation with the chair, people leaving on Route 12 southbound, yielding next to CVS, that never happens already, they'll be coming in at an even higher speed this time. So, just two of the main concerns that I had right out the gate.
I don't think that even should be before the planning board, to be honest with you.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to see if the group had any comments on it, being residents, and just thoughts. It's not something that I had to bring to the board, I just, if at all.
And we already received a letter from the Board of Selectmen, regarding marijuana bylaw recommendation?
I did the advertising for this. It'll be on our next agenda.
Okay. Are we going to go a subcommittee on that, or are we just going to have a discussion?
There's another thing.
Recommendations?
There's another thing. I don't think the planning board should ever do that. They're already established laws. Did you read the, did you read the four pages of restrictions and stuff on that?
Yeah, but I think that's something you're proposing that we adopt. Right. Standard town meeting procedure, 48 section five, the planning board has to make their recommendations to the Board of Selectmen before endorsing the bylaw.
That's where it should go, town meeting.
Oh, exactly. It has to come through us first before it gets there.
We're right about there, so.
So, what do you need from us?
Is that just, I know it's... Just, it's just, we got the letter, that's all.
And then, a little for Chris, we already discussed that. Entertained a motion to the hearing?
Take that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody in the public? Is there any?
Plan itself.
Okay. And a motion to the plan?
Make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan. Does the town have a recommendation on conditions?
Part of your motion, list the numbers that you like.
Want to discuss?
The menu.
Yeah.
With all the standard conditions?
Yeah, all the standard conditions. The ones that are typically, is what, number five? Is that what it's here?
Through the chair, I want to ask the applicant, construction hours for standard conditions are 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. 8:30 to 12 o'clock Saturdays, no work on Sundays and holidays. Is that reasonable?
The only one I would consider omitting is 11, is for the usual one-story build quarantine area, this is not in that area.
So, 1 through 10, omitting 11?
Also, omitting number 10, also, they've already provided a complete admission of drainage report.
So, 1 through 9?
And... So moved.
I would say 1 through, 1 through 8.
So moved. So, with conditions 1 through 8, standard conditions, which, you guys...
Do they have a caution for that?
They definitely showed a draft decision to the applicant for some...
Is it subject to the participation commission?
It's part of the, it's part of the conditions, all of the boards.
That's part of our subdivision rules.
My town, is that to be the second or second?
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Uh, I could, sorry.
Nope.
That being...
No, it was a little hard to read out the last, I think I was going to read it.
The applicant be required to file for endorsement of the plan within the 24-month period. I believe you're already, ready to get that done.
I'm sorry.
Just as a condition to require the applicant to file for endorsement of the plan within 24 months of approval. It's, the language, yeah.
Hopefully, be less than 24 days. Might way be 24 hours at this point.
What does a bond command on that?
The bond has to be established prior to the endorsement of the plan, so that language wouldn't, can't encompass that.
And who figures out the amount of the bond?
The engineer for the applicant would propose that to myself and the town engineer. We review it based on the Mass, the Mass dot, weighted bid prices and match that and ensure that everything's earned.
Now, for the bonding, would you want everything after base coat of blacktop, or do you want everything in the bonding right from start?
The roadwork.
Is part of the...
You can start off with a covenant, couldn't you?
Right.
Yes, I mean, a lot of times, people will start off with a covenant, do some of the work...
Or a tri-party agreement.
Under a covenant, and then do the bond value after, you know, after the clearing, the upgrading is done.
Right.
So that you're not bonding everything. Because the covenant can cover you until you need to start building anything.
Because we can't pull building permits until I have base coat of blacktop, anyway.
Yes, you'd probably want to file a covenant first, and then...
That's the way we've always done it, yeah. It's called a covenant.
Yeah, I don't, that's, that's good.
Yeah, the covenant has to be done before the endorsement.
No, we, we only have to provide figures for after, whatever comes after the base coat of blacktop.
So, in that case, that's not a, that's not a modification to the conditions that were proposed, but the first thing that you suggested was to be the...
24 months for endorsement.
The endorsement of the plan for 24 months.
Right.
Would be an additional, addition to...
So, I'd accept that as a friendly amendment to, and then you, second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'll draft the decision. I'll share it with you prior to our next meeting, when it is signed. If you have any questions about the conditions.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, nothing really. Yeah. And I'll copy it out to you the next time.
I was really hoping to step off with the venue and get the conditions review. Go in and get them in to you?
Yes, to Bill and Joanna.
So, we'll do it for base coat of blacktop after, and then draft up the covenant?
Yeah, the covenant, is what you need in order to endorse the plan and do the A and R before you get it recorded, so we have to have that commitment established.
Right. So, you think that'll be September meeting, then?
Assuming, however fast you can get it to us. The decision gets stamped on the 26, 20-day appeal period, September meeting should be right about there.
Okay.
Given how many folks have been in the audience, I don't know how many folks are ready to appeal, so.
Okay.
Start over right away.
You can work under an appeal, anybody. You can work under the appeal periods. The only thing is...
Your risk.
It's in your, it's in your power.
Right.
You know?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so, we have some signatures?
We do.
And, three Jacobson Drive update?
No.
No update. Any response on Bryn Mawr Estates?
Not yet.
No response. Be about a notification process.
Sure. Through the chair, one of the things we'd like to do prior to the meeting is announce the ones that are continued, as the gentleman brought to our attention last meeting. So, we did that. The other thing, I'm going to add some language on the public hearing notices for new hearings to remind them to contact Town Hall the day of the meeting to ensure that the meeting is still scheduled.
Hasn't been continued.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, not lose people's time. We have 121 Southwood Street, special permits.
I, we carried that over to the next meeting.
We're going to carry that one over?
Yep.
189 Washington Street?
I have that one. Just so I'm clear, the board's recommendation from the last meeting, and I'm sure you must read this, all right. One of the conditions for 189 Washington Street, this was the cheer, the cheer facility, the parking lot striped in accordance with the approved plan within 60 days after receiving an occupancy permit for the building. That's, I believe that was the motion, it was Ronnie's motion, but that's, I'm pretty sure it was.
Yeah.
Because we went from 90 to 30, and it was settled, but I just wanted to make sure that was right.
Okay.
Okay, what happened to that video conferencing thing at the selectance meeting?
Did they talk about it last? I don't think they talked about it at the last meeting.
You should have.
I, I didn't stay for the whole thing. They did not. I think it's on for their next meeting.
I meant to mark this up as a bunch of things in here.
It's just an FYI for the board. I did, I did send a draft, planning board alternate member bylaw to Attorney Hennigan today. And we're hoping to get it in front of the selectmen in two weeks.
That was already in there. All right, minutes of July 28. Comments, additions, corrections?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of July 28.
Second. There are a couple of corrections. I marked it up a little bit, too. I did minutes for 15 years at CMOPC, so I'll just provide the corrections to Eric. Motion and second?
Prove with side with corrections.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Mass DOT toll booth project notification letter.
Sure, so, thank you. Through the chair, this is a letter sent to both Julie and I, requesting our feedback for their project to eliminate the toll booths at the Mass Pike on-ramp in our town. This would be the best, if they're eliminating them altogether, or this is the really fast one, like they have in Florida. I might have missed that.
Demolition, remove the toll plaza structures, and reconfiguration of the respective lanes and connecting ramps.
I think on that, what we should do is get some more feedback from how the town officials feel about that, or the town meeting members feel about that...
Agreed.
Before we even discuss it, okay? I don't even want to get into the discussion on that.
Okay, I brought it here because I was curious, just having received the letter, but my main concern is the bottleneck that happens off, getting off, trying to get onto 290 from the Mass Pike. That's about seven lanes reduced to one in a very short period, reducing the toll, and that's just going to get worse. I'd like to see more details on that, if there's widening or lane changes or whatnot. In addition to that, in my conversation with the chair, people leaving on Route 12 southbound, yielding next to CVS, that never happens already, they'll be coming in at an even higher speed this time. So, just two of the main concerns that I had right out the gate.
I don't think that even should be before the planning board, to be honest with you.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to see if the group had any comments on it, being residents, and just just thoughts. It's not something that I had to bring to the board, I just, if at all.
And we already received a letter from the Board of Selectmen, regarding marijuana bylaw recommendation?
I did the advertising for this. It'll be on our next agenda.
Okay. Are we going to go a subcommittee on that, or are we just going to have a discussion?
There's another thing.
Recommendations?
There's another thing. I don't think the planning board should ever do that. They're already established laws. Did you read the, did you read the four pages of restrictions and stuff on that?
Yeah, but I think that's something you're proposing that we adopt. Right. Standard town meeting procedure, 48 section five, the planning board has to make their recommendations to the Board of Selectmen before endorsing the bylaw.
That's where it should go, town meeting.
Oh, exactly. It has to come through us first before it gets there.
We're right about there, so.
So, what do you need from us? Is that just, I know it's...
Just, it's just, we got the letter, that's all.
And then, a little for Chris, we already discussed that. Entertained a motion to the hearing?
Take that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. [music]